The Board of Education meeting is called to order. We'll begin with a pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll call attendance, please, Marty.
Mary Jo Rasmunowski.
Here.
Mary Jo Reddick.
Here.
Patty Jacobson.
Here.
Laura Mead. Amy Helfman.
Here.
Inhomocentro Cloud.
Here.
Scott Farken.
Thank you. Has the meeting been notified according to open meeting laws?
Yes.
Thank you. We are now at public comment section. Anybody wish to address the board? Okay. I'd like to make a motion to move focus on purpose our FabLab students to present first on the agenda tonight. Second. Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. You guys are up. Welcome. Your clicker is right there. I'm gonna give you a... Could you start with introductions so they know who you are?
Yeah.
Perfect.
Alright, so good afternoon. We are honored and thankful to be here to represent FabLab at Black River Falls High School. We are excited to share some of the great things we do in our school. And my name is Jacob Potter and I'm a senior.
I'm a sophomore and I'm Jordan Zomer.
I'm Tristan. I'm a sophomore as well.
Would you guys like me to pass this around?
Either end is good. Thanks for that.
And it's a prototype and it was also damaging transportation. Putting that out there.
Good to know we're not the ones that damaged it. So we appreciate that.
We brought with us today the coaster and so we're showing that around with you guys today.
We call our coaster "Our Great State" because it does such a great job showcasing the great things our state has to offer.
We put a lot of work and thought into making this coaster capturing several elements or several different elements of Wisconsin, starting with the coaster holder. The first obvious way that we did this was by making the holder shaped like the state of Wisconsin. The holder shows Wisconsin state motto, which is forward. It also shows since 1848, which is the year Wisconsin became a state. The coaster is also made of oak, which is very common tree across Wisconsin's territory.
We themed each coaster to represent an industry cluster that is here in Wisconsin. Coaster one shows an airplane to represent the industry aerospace. And it's companies that are in the aerospace, I guess you could say is Boeing is a big one. And it just prepares our education or education system for students in our state for advancements in aerospace.
The next coaster shows a stethoscope to represent biohealth. Our university system, along with top-of-the-line healthcare like Marshfield Clinic, provides lots of funding for research, more specifically scientific research.
Coaster three shows a lightning bolt to represent power, energy, and control. Lots of this works gets taken for granted, but Wisconsin is one of the finest at it. Through the Great Lakes Bioengineering Research Center, Wisconsin Engineering Institute Midwest Energy Research Consortium, right down to our local Jackson Electric Company, Wisconsin is world leader in energy conservation.
The fourth coaster shows beer, wine, and cheese to represent the food and beverage. We all know a lot of people and like Wisconsinites love their beer and cheese. And good thing we live in the state that makes the most of it. Wisconsin is full of local breweries like Sand Creek Brewery and Black River Falls. And also it's home to like Miller Coors and other ones like that, I guess.
The fifth coaster shows a gear to represent manufacturing. Wisconsin is in the top 10 for states with the most manufacturing. There are lots of great small and large companies around the state that provide products across the world, such as DNS Manufacturing, which is located right here in Black River Falls, Wisconsin.
The last coaster shows a fish to represent freshwater technology. Bordering two Great Lakes and containing 15,000 more, Wisconsin is home to lots of freshwater and has one of the finest educational systems and neonotes for teaching people about it.
In order to design this coaster, we went through the engineering design process. The first step was to identify a problem. The problem was that WIDIC needs a gift to give to senior officials from foreign governments and businesses, where gift-giving is a standard protocol. They also need a gift that can be used for the governor and lieutenant governor when they need to give or provide gifts for foreign delegates visiting Wisconsin.
Then we had to gather information. We looked at the design elements and criteria sent by WIDIC and given to us by our teacher so that we could determine what elements the final solution would need to have.
The third step was to brainstorm possible solutions. This is where we listed ideas and did some sketching and experimenting in CorelDraw to see what idea would work the best. We brainstormed different shapes, words, pictures, and designs for the coasters.
The fourth step was to select, combine, and refine. Between the three of us, we had some pretty good ideas and we also had some ideas that weren't the best. So we just picked ones that we all liked and just went along with it and we ended up where we are, I guess.
Once we got rid of the least favorite ideas, we took the best ones. We chose a final solution. Here you can see the CAD files that we created using CorelDraw.
Now for the step that you all have been writing for, building it. First, we cut the wood pieces for the coastal holder. Takes a piece of scrapboard about... Miss Babe, which we had in the presentation, but we're gonna bring it with us today. Otherwise, it's about $1.46 worth of wood. We then put this piece in the laser engraver and ran one file that cuts out the shape of Wisconsin and engraves all the words and engraves which is called rastering first and then cuts the outline. This is known as vectoring. This process takes about 13 minutes.
After we cut everything out, we glued all the layers together. By making the coaster in layers, we solved a few issues. First of all, the laser engraver can only cut through 3 1/8 inch or thinner wood. By using quarter-inch plywood, we can assure it will cut through all the way. When we glue all the layers together, it also allows the holder to be thick enough to hold all the coasters. This made it really easy to put a bottom on the holder.
After that, we sanded everything smooth as well as some of the burn from the laser. No matter what, the laser will always burn the edges slightly when cutting through the wood. Because it was difficult to sand off all the burn, we then decided to paint the bottom and the sides black, but left the top unpainted to show the oak wood grain. Everything was then covered with a clear coat spray polyurethane.
Last thing that we did was engrave and cut out the coasters on acrylic. This was all done with one file on CorelDraw. That was used for both rastering and vectoring. These coasters use about 30 cents' worth of acrylic. There is no sanding or finishing necessary on the coasters. And this file takes about 10 minutes to run. The whole coaster set costs less than $2 to make and takes about an hour.
The very last step to the problem-solving process was to evaluate our solution. After evaluating our solution, we discovered that we liked how our design successfully and creatively solved the problem we were presented by WIDIC. It is really easy to mass-produce everything that is done on the laser engraver because it has files that are already made. The cost is very minimal to our coaster and there is not a lot of time involved to create a high-quality product.
Well, that is how we made our final product, which is...
Alright, and then we would like to thank the WIDIC and the school board for giving us grants for our FabLab. And we're honored to here present to you guys today. Thank you all.
So I was asking them how, what they found out after their presentation in Stevens Point and they said, "We're kinda feeling..."
Pretty well.
They feel like they got first place. They haven't heard officially, but they're kinda feeling like it went well, right? So they have not heard yet.
So if you get first place, what does that mean?
The top two, they were, there was some discussion about how governing officials might come to our school district and give a little speech, I guess. And then the top two also get like more manufactured and then they give out to foreign governments.
There's gonna be like 100 produced of the winning two coasters every year then.
UW volunteered to make them after, and then, and then we, they gave us the choice if we wanted to manufacture anymore.
Like at our school here.
I love how you added so much marketing of Wisconsin along with the coaster presentation. You did a great job. Thanks so much for giving your time tonight and coming to us. Congratulations. And we should recognize Austin Rae Bernay, the board has mentioned before. Austin helped facilitate the whole project just once.
He gave us a lot of help.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you for representing us well. And you, you can, you're free to stay for the rest of the meeting or you can go and do your homework.
You probably have to eat because they heat for baseball practice.
Okay, okay. Thank you so much for coming.
Baseball is inside yet, yes? Unless you're shoveling the field? Was that your first workout, shoveling the field?
We did that last year.
Yeah, we did that last year and that was quite a bit of work. We had a decent amount last year, I guess.
It was pretty fun. We had a little snowball fight after.
I'm shocked.
Baseball-sized snowballs, I'm sure. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Go on to gifts and grants.
So we have a lot of gifts and grants to recognize, which always makes for fabulous conversations. So first off, you will see almost annually something from the York Cause LLC, Wells Fargo. That is a friend of Jen Doll, our fabulous elementary art teacher, and she has a friend who supports her habits. And so there is $1,050 that is donated to the elementary artists. And again, that is almost an annual donation, so that's fabulous. The next one that I wanted to highlight was the U.S. Midway Foundation for the youth shooting sports. And so as you know, the district does not financially support the Shooting Tigers, but they have a combination of fundraisers, donations, and the fees that the students that participate choose to pay. This is the foundation that they write grants to, to keep the team moving. So $3,243 was received on behalf of the Shooting Tigers, so that's fantastic. Next, the Chrome Clinic does also dress up or dress down, which I thought was funny because we always make our donations to others and how nice that somebody thought to make their donation to us. Because when we collect the money, we don't spend it on things, we give it away. And so now someone has gifted us, the Chrome Clinic, gave us $225 from their dress-down days.
So how will that get used? I mean, it's a lot of times grants are a specific thing.
So my thought was, was that we could either use it towards something district-wide, like the Spring Teacher Appreciation Day or perhaps the Spring Banquet. Otherwise, I guess I'm not sure the $225, but that would definitely be a district-wide event. Next, we have a donation from Janelle Johnson. Not Janelle Johnson, our middle school special ed teacher, but another Janelle Johnson, who actually is a friend, a close friend of Melanie Floyd's. And so she has one of those gift-giving angels, as does Jen Doll. And so there is a donation of $500 to Forest Street Early Learning Center to be used at their discretion. Very generous.
Any questions? Yes, some very generous donations. Is there a motion to approve?
That motion?
Cue. Patty, seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Move on to job shadow.
Alright, I just wanted to share with you two things. First of all, you recall that the middle school talked, Stephanie Ann, the middle school, talked a little bit about the job shadow day, that they have changed the format of that, that all eighth graders can go on the same two days. They get passed out and so on and so forth. We are canvassing a much greater percentage of our community because it is done through our direction as opposed to the kids picking and choosing to go with mom or dad or whatever. And so we got this fantastic email back from the Co-op Credit Union and wanted to share with you because when you consider, I'm sure it makes everybody a little bit nervous, when they send all those eighth graders out to go forth and represent us in style, you hope they remember all those conversations and they do that. And so it was really, really nice that she just couldn't say enough positives. She just said they really represented themselves so well and they asked great questions, which shows that they were prepared and interested. And I just feel like that is a nice change for all of our students, that they're getting a very appropriate job opportunity, job shadow opportunity. But also how nice for our community business is to have those positive interactions with our kids. I just think that that is a win-win all the way around. So I wanted to share that feedback with you. The next thing that I put in there, so Sheri Trokelson works down at CISA and she is the Youth Apprenticeship Coordinator. And so she was asking schools to talk about their youth apprenticeships. And our school district's social media school apprentice, Sydney says, "I'll tell you about it, but I'm gonna make a video." And so Sydney put this video together and Sheri is using it throughout all of her CISA schools. And I just wanted to make sure that you got the opportunity to see it as well. So if you would thank us all.
My name is...
I was thinking the same.
Brian Johnson. I am the career coordinator at Black River Falls High School. YA program is designed to give students industry-specific skills that relate to whatever field that they want to work in. Most of the kids have an interest in that career field. And so some cases, like I've had a few students that, you know, for example, doing plumbing, that then got hired full-time after doing the youth apprenticeship program with us. So now they're in that field and they kind of leg up on their competition because of the YA program.
Hi, I'm Emma Bible and I am a youth apprentice for finance. I'm a teller at the Wambeau State Bank here in Black River Falls. And I do a lot of things like deposits, transactions, withdrawals, all that kind of stuff. My youth apprenticeship has taught me a lot. I've learned a lot of work skills, how to work with customers, like customer service. And I've also learned a lot about the world of business and banking.
My name's Sydney Samson Webb and I'm a youth apprentice for marketing. I work as the social media intern for the school district and help create posts for Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram that promote like the school and students here. And I have a lot of fun doing it and I think it's helped me a lot find like a future career in type marketing that I want to go into when I go to college.
I'm Jordan Johnson. I'm in the YA program of hospitality and tourism at Perkins. I kind of do a little of everything. Started out as a baker and then gradually moved my way up through our little system that we have to cook, serve, host. Doing the YA program helps get you more skills that you can take to another job.
My name is Asher LaRush and I'm a finance youth apprentice at the Co-op Credit Union in Black River Falls. My title is a student member service representative. Basically, I'm a teller. I help members perform basic transactions. I can deposit money, take money out.
I would highly recommend the youth apprenticeship program because it gives you like real-world experience while you're in high school. And I actually get paid to work at the credit union, so then it gives me a chance to make a little extra money for college and stuff too.
The sound wasn't super high, but you got to see kind of a sampling of a lot of our students that are out there doing that work. Sounds pretty nice.
Move on to any questions?
Yeah, glad to hear us say it. After listening to that presentation and seeing this, I think sometimes it'd be good for us to reach out to some of the TV stations for some good things that we do. You know, the Standard Journal is really good about promoting it, but I see other schools doing really cool things. Maybe sometime we should reach out. I thought that when I was teaching, I should reach out more.
Well, especially if those young men, you know, are in the top end of that Wisconsin thing. That would be, that'll probably make the news anyway, but yeah, that would be good. Good idea. Any more, any more discussion? Move on to employment recommendations. Lot of changes.
Yeah, we do have a few that I wanted to talk a little bit about. So I included in your packet some of the information. So Sumilis is also retiring at the end of the school year at Red Creek. And so while they were doing all the interviews, they actually hired both positions. And so you remember you accepted Jen Gunther's. Kathy Murray is already in that position. And Tyler Amen is going to be in Sumilis's position. And so at the end of the year, we'll be hiring for two new building aides for next year. And Jimmy Zawaki, I included his letter of resignation. I told him that it was very, very well-written and very, very kind, but we're gonna have to decline at this point too. That's your choice to make, folks. I'm just sharing my thoughts. Truly, I, it's exciting for Jimmy to be able to go back home. There's no doubt about that. I took that opportunity the first time I got it, as many of us do. And so to be able to invest in the community where you're raising your kids and where the system where your kids are gonna go to school, that's an exciting opportunity. And so we know that Jimmy's gonna do fantastic things up the road and hopefully we'll keep collaborating even as he moves on. So we appreciate all that he's done. Les Dakasul has taught at our middle school for 25 years. He's taught social studies for us. And so he's retiring at the end of this year. A little excited about it, but still does fabulous work every day. Pat Waite has been a cook over at Gav Hart for many years and now over at Red Creek. She just had her 80th birthday party, I believe, and she's finally decided it's time to be done. So she's leaving us in a couple of weeks here. Ken Manning was our part-time school counselor at Red Creek. And he is a retired principal and so now he's retiring from this as well. And so really retiring, I guess. And then the one new employee that we have brought on board, Jay Weinman is our new activities director. And if you didn't see that email announcement, he is the brother, the big brother of Kent Weinman, our building and grounds. And we did an interview with him via Skype because he is still over in China teaching. He's taught in Las Vegas. He's taught in, I want to say Kansas. And then moved to China where he has done two years there. He's done an awful lot of coaching and he does a lot of broadcast journalism. And he's just really a dynamic individual. And I always feel like if you can come across as being extremely charismatic over Skype, that really bodes well for you, that you've got an awful lot going on. He almost lost the interview when at the very end he said, "We said, 'Is there any other questions you have?'" And he pulled out a Viking hat and put it on and said, "Is this gonna be a problem?" Yeah, so there, we, we moved on. I just said, so our Director of Business Services will be really excited, but I'm still not. We're excited to have him. He comes back from China in late June and so he's ready to get started. And of course, him and his brother are already plotting and scheming all the exciting things that they'd like to accomplish together. So we're excited to have him.
Any questions or discussion on the recommendations?
I make a motion to approve the employment recommendations as presented.
Thank you. Thank you. Any questions? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Good luck. Yes, yes. Okay. WIAA Annual Meeting Delegate Appointed.
So I included all of the resolutions in there for you. Honestly, all the board typically does is we just need to officially designate Jim Rehman as our delegate voter at the WIAA Annual Meeting. So that would be my recommendation.
I'm willing to accept. Jim is the delegate.
Sorry.
All in favor, say aye. Okay, you know, I was gonna, yeah, I said, does anyone have any discussion about any of the policies that were...
It's that one that restricts kids from playing in their senior year. And I object to that before, just because I think it puts your athletics ahead of academics, really. So if you wanted to move for athletic or academic reasons, you would be prohibited from playing as a senior. And I think that's unfortunate. Do they know that?
Any other items you want brought out for discussion? We have a motion as second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed?
No.
Okay, motion carried. Elementary schedule update.
So I'm going to share a brief update and if the principals would like to chime in, they certainly can. So the schedule that we created last year with the help of Dr. Ready was kind of a dynamic masterpiece. And you move one domino and it really wreaks havoc on the whole thing. And so when we dug in deeper this year, I'm gonna start with the pros. We really, the grade levels have really, really, really appreciated that common planning time for those grade levels that got it. Forest Street and second grade have still had to go in pods. They've not had the whole grade level available at the same time. Third, fourth, and fifth grade are so excited to have that daily time with their teammates and their planning. Fifth grade, they, between their common planning time and their PLC, they've got the bulk of their ELA and math work planned out for the coming week because they use it very well together. We weren't able to do that for all grade levels. However, in order to do that, we moved our music and FIED to two times a week at 45 minutes, as opposed to the three times for 30 minutes. The state statute for FIED, they have clarified it and it no longer says 90 minutes. It now says three times a week for 30 minutes. So all of that work that we did with Dr. Ready is really challenged by that. And so three elementary principals have spent countless hours and I take along and they're all on their laptops and to be honest, I prefer my graph paper and my coloring and trying to lay all of that out. So where we think we can land is the encore teachers at Red Creek last year weren't sure they wanted 45 minutes, but now they really like 45 minutes after they tried it for a while. Forest Street didn't think they'd like 45 minutes and they were right. They, 45 minutes is too long for K and 1 kids. So we keep trying to play with the schedule to see what we can do. We're adding 10 instructional minutes onto each day next year, which in a six-day rotation, that's 60 additional instructional minutes we have. I don't believe our intention in adding those instructional minutes was that kids got more FIED and music time. I believe it was from our core instructional time. And so we don't want to just give all of that 60 minutes to music and FIED because we want some of that for the core areas, which is why we were advocating for it in the first place. And so we think that we can work it out that each grade level would have a common hour planning block, like two times a week and/or maybe three times a week. It depends on the grade level. And so like at fourth and fifth grade, it just fits neater into the boxes because there's only five teachers at those grade levels. The others, it gets a little bit more complicated. There's a ton of shared staff in that work. And then where we keep butting up at Forest Street is even if we have two FIED teachers available, there's one gym and it's not big enough for two classes. There's one music room and not big enough for two classes. So the physical constraints at Forest Street keep challenging our work as well. So we don't have a final product for you, but again, it's March. And I keep reminding people, when I was a music teacher, I would show up in August and be given my schedule for that year. We're gonna be way ahead of August, but we're not ready in March yet, is the moral of the story. So we keep plugging the way at it. Every week, we meet for about an hour and a half and then we all go out and do homework and then we bring back the next samples. And honestly, you look at all those little slots for long enough, then you have to give it to them and say, "You find the problems with it and why it's not gonna work." And again, the shared staffing and the, yeah, it's just really, really complicated, is the moral of the story. We're disappointed that after getting the outside help from Dr. Ready, that unfortunately, we're back at the drawing board. But Melanie did a great job with her staff, asking them priorities. What are your greatest priorities? Well, at Forest Street, in the past, all their specials have been in the morning and they really wanted them in the afternoon. Okay, we think we can make that happen. And so with that shared staff, it's an either-or. One of the buildings needs them in the morning, one of them in the afternoon. And so we decided for this year, our youngest learners would have their specials in the afternoon when they're most ready to move and they'll have their core academics in the morning. But that means that something has to give over at Red Creek. So it's complicated, but so the specials in the afternoon was a high priority. Having at least one or two days of common time with the rest of your team was a high priority. And then the encore teachers, of course, they would love it if they didn't have a section of fifth grade and a section of third grade, then a section of second grade. With like a two-minute break in between, that's difficult to shift gears, particularly in the gym when they've got all the equipment set up and then have to take it down in a moment. And so we're trying hard to prioritize the core instruction, but that doesn't always feel respectful to the encore teachers. They sometimes feel slighted by that. But again, we added the instructional minutes to maximize our core instruction, so.
So when you're planning for a FIED, you're doing three 30 minutes at Forest Street? And at Red Creek, were they advocating for three 45s, is what they want?
They preferred it to stay, that would be their ideal, but we're simply not gonna do that because then we would need more FIED teaching time. We need more music teaching time and we're not...
They've got a match.
We haven't prioritized that as a budget add. So it would be three 30s and so, yeah. They want it all. They want the 45 minutes because it was easier, but they also want them more often. So that is, you know, three times as opposed to two times and not very often in life to get it all. So we're trying to come up with the best compromise possible.
Can you go back on, on what was, what was said and who we were directed by that we had to change this?
So the recommendations from DPI talk about teaching of FIED. And so last year, when we looked it up, when we were sitting with Dr. Ready, it said 90 minutes a week. And we said, "Check two 45-minute blocks, got it." This year, when you dig in, and our FIED teachers have found it multiple times, it says three 30 minutes, a minimum of 30 minutes, three times a week, is what it says.
I'm finding that kind of disappointing because I thought that local control was being stressed as long as you stayed within the guidelines. I didn't realize that had come.
It did. And so we told Dr. Ready and he just said, "Yeah, we fixed it last year." Now that our rules have changed a little bit. So I really think we're gonna... So I really think we're going to come up with something that is going to get at least two days of common planning plus their Friday PLC. So that is still better than K1, 2 had it this year. It's a step back for 3, 4, 5, but they also recognize the gift that they had this year and they also recognize that their colleagues at the other grade levels would greatly benefit from it as well. So no one is being...
Are you trying to find a way to solve it without having a lot of interrupted class time?
That was our, that was our hope, but that adds, you know, even more challenge. And again, honestly, we could make it work very easily. If we could send all the staff to Forest Street for the afternoon, we would be done. But there's only one gym and there's only one music room. And so we can't send everyone there for the afternoon. That means some of it has to happen in the morning and, yeah, so. Anyway, so you will see it before the school year is done and everyone's going to love it next year. Now, they want to see how your schedule changes. When teachers first get it in the fall, they're always like, oh my gosh, this is, and they struggle and, but then in the spring, when you say, okay, let's talk about what changes we're going to make for next year, they say, change it? I love this. Why are we going to change it? It's just what they get used to and comfortable with and we absolutely recognize that. But we're trying to keep the best of what we gained with this one and still make sure we're in compliance with the FIED laws.
Thank you. Okay. And student success committee?
We've got our forum, forum meeting in April instead.
Okay. What's the date? April?
What's the date?
Nine, I believe.
Okay.
Nine.
Okay, thanks. Inclimate weather, learning opportunity discussion.
So I wanted to talk with you a little bit. Actually, I shared with you a couple documents that were just some interesting information. So when we talk about e-learning, there was a huge statewide survey that was done and they talked about, whenever you talk about e-learning, there's packets of our state that say, we don't have connectivity. We can't possibly do e-learning because there's none of our kids that have connectivity. So this was something that was done last year and they talked about the modern professional development for technology use, but I heard the most recent, just trying to find, I thought it, oh, we just scrolled down just a little bit. There we go. 75% of school districts have built wireless networks, ready to support. Where is it? 90% of students?
Oh, that was a little...
Yeah, up and...
Yeah, I'm sorry. I kind of...
Right there.
Yeah, fewer than 9, 90% of students do not have connectivity. Almost a third of all Wisconsin school districts. Okay. So when, all right, the guy spoke at our local CISA. He said, in our region, it's about one in five that could not have connectivity in their home. He didn't say did not because of financial reasons, but he said could not have connectivity. And so the whole idea came up with our just many, many, many snow days and the challenges that we face. And so I've done a little bit of digging with DPI as to what meets the expectation, what does not. And obviously, there's a lot of schools that are talking about it now when they show the school closings and they show the wild schedule. That's in La Crescent, Minnesota, and so would have a different set of rules than the state of Wisconsin. And so DPI has just started putting out some information like slowdown when people recognize that it still needs to be counted as face-to-face instruction. And so Mr. Chambers was actually sharing some of what he has heard from what La Crescent is doing in that the teachers keep office hours and the kids are home working on their stuff, but know that they can email or call the teacher. And so it really counts as a teacher work time as well as the students' online time. And so we feel like in our system, our high school is set up to do that pretty smoothly because so much of the content is already in Canvas. When we move past the high school, we really lose some of those meaningful opportunities. And so at the middle school, there is some electronic content that the kids could access, but certainly not to the degree that the high school is. And then you move down to the elementary. And so what we've talked about a little bit are, there definitely are some learning websites that the kids log into during different times during the day. Do we set up some kind of an expectation for, because all of those programs will now track your level of active engagement. And so would there be something that we would want to do there? What do we want to do with attendance? How are we going to count if the child is engaged that day? The way some of the schools have done it is that their parent has to call the office and say, no, my child really is sick today and they will not be participating. So then it goes down as an excuse, absence, or the kid has to log in somewhere and if they don't show that they logged in, then the secretary has to call and say, are you... So it is unique. And then we take it all the way down to Forest Street. What would meaningful instruction look like there without somebody present? And in our current situation with our minute accountability, the high school and Forest Street are the two buildings that are the most challenged, simply because more recess time over at Forest Street and the lunch break at the high school. And so those are the two buildings that struggle the most. Again, high school, I think we could probably come up with something. Melanie, at Forest Street, we end up in spring when people probably need to be outside the most. Recess gets a little bit shorter and a little bit shorter to try to get those instructional minutes back. And so we've taken the stance that we've made all kids make up most of those days, but then when it gets down to it, both the middle school and Red Creek have plenty, like there are 20 hours over the requirements. And so do you make a correction as a whole system when over half of it is okay and the others are not? And so that's what we've been worrying with a little bit. And so we were going to do a calendar survey with our families anyway. So would you mind helping out that calendar survey? So we asked, I'm just going to, this is hot off the presses, I just sent it out last week and we already had almost 300 respondents. And so it's kind of a whole variety of questions in there. But the first one, just so you can see from where you're looking at it, the blue are all parents of students, the red are staff members, and then the orange are both a parent and a staff member, just so you know what you're looking at. And then you scroll. We just asked some of our general calendar questions. If there's a day for professional development, there's some districts that will just take off like Wednesday and then come right back the next day. We asked and clearly, the majority says we would prefer to have it connected to a weekend. We asked the week-long spring break, knowing that we would have to come later in June. That's a discussion when the staff is sitting around talking about calendar, they always struggle with spring break. Some people feel like a few days around Easter is good. Some people feel like we need a Monday through Friday. This tells me pretty clearly that we don't need a Monday through Friday, that they're okay with a few days. But that's good information to have because otherwise, we all know just what the few people that we talked to tell us. So this was good for us. So then we talked about spring break versus getting a year. Do you want one every year or every other? Well, the blue is every year, the red is every other, and then the vast majority, well, a month of it. If you add those together with the people, I don't have a strong opinion, so they're probably not doing much on spring break. So again, good information for us to have. Then we started asking some questions about inclement weather days because the other part of talking about an e-learning day, where are our kids going when there's a snow day? Is there a daycare center who suddenly can have all these packets that they're trying to go through with the kids? Or are there, you know, going to grandma's house who doesn't have connectivity? So we asked a couple of questions. Is there internet connectivity? You can see 95% said yes, but folks...
Yeah, it's on online.
It's an electronic survey that we sent. So this is certainly not indicative of our community. So I thought it was kind of interesting that we sent an electronic survey and some people said no. So they must have taken it on their phone, but, because at first we looked at it like, wow, 95. It was an electronic survey. Anyway. And then we said, where do your children go when there's a snow day? The, well, 78% of them, they stay home. And then there were just a few other answers. A relative or a friend and then licensed daycare to work with parents. And then is there internet connectivity where your child spends their snow days? Again, electronic survey, but a high response rate that yes, they do. Then we asked, do you have a tablet or laptop, not a cell phone available for your child? Because we certainly wouldn't advocate for doing any of that learning on their parent's cellphone. And you can see that the majority said, yes, they do have a device. And then we did add the high school because we know they have a school-issued device. Then we asked, e-learning days are something that is used to provide instruction at home? Anyway, we said, are you interested in us just doing more exploring on this? Because we weren't sure, maybe the vast majority of parents are going to be like, no, that's silly. We don't, we don't want to talk about that. We want our kids to come and be in school. And 20% said, yes, I'm interested in more information. And 20% said, nope, I think we should continue our current practice. So that means that we'll do some further digging and see what possibilities we can come up with. Then when we have additional instructional minutes that need to be made up, which of these options? Extend the length of the school day? And the reason I asked that one is because when we added the 15 minutes, we did get some parents that were concerned about the lengthening of that day and if they should possibly have sports practices after school. The distance from when they got off the bus to when lunch was, and they were concerned about that. And so we said, maybe that was just our misconception that they would prefer lengthening the day as opposed to adding more days. And I think this clearly tells us that people would prefer to add the minutes as opposed to add less. Then we asked about high school graduation. While we had people hooked on a survey, we said, should seniors finish school earlier than the rest of the students? 53% said, yes, I like that idea. And if you recall, I shared with you that out of our CISA, there's 26 schools in our CISA, 16 of them responded to my survey and we were the only ones that do not let our seniors out early of that 16 that responded in our region. So 53% of our parents or the kid who took the survey said, yes, I think we should. And then we asked them, so if we are going to let our seniors out early, when should graduation be? And again, just for the background, you recall, we talked about this a little bit in terms of the use of the fieldhouse, but also what makes sense. And so just to read the hieroglyphics, if you were to look at, the blue is the number one. So it looks like the majority of people said the first Sunday following the last day of school, which is our current practice. However, what I'm unsure of, probably should have worded my question differently, does that mean over half of them think seniors should get out early? Do they mean the first Sunday after their seniors are done or do they mean the first Sunday in general? I'm unsure. However, we also added Memorial Day weekend, which that is the most popular around our CISA. Interesting that that was the least favorable answer in our region. So if we were to add number one and number two together, the first Sunday in June would clearly win. If you go for who thought it was the first or second and exclude the, then the first Sunday in June would clearly win. So, scroll again. Then we said, if it is Memorial Day weekend, when would you prefer? Which that was their least favorite choice, so I'm not sure why we would even worry much more about that. So then I tried describing that 45-15 calendar option where the school year begins, can't begin before September 1st still, so the school year begins and the kids go for 45 days, then have 15 off. Many schools that do this have five days that are truly vacation and then 10 days that are some type of an interim. And they count that as summer school or intervention or any number of things, but it's 45-15, 45-15, four times throughout the year. They end up finishing, was it, no, they don't, it's July, they end up with six solid weeks off is what they end up with. So six solid weeks of summertime plus those interims broken out throughout the year. So it was close, but over half said, yeah, I'm curious and more information about that. Because we, every time we start talking calendar, there's somebody who'll throw that out there. What about that 45-15? And I just said, how many people care about this? Is it just a few or is it really? Well, over half are saying, I'm curious. So then we asked, if you like the idea, are you willing to help us out on a committee? Which we asked and that's okay, that's okay. Would you just hover by the, somebody else go find out. And Melanie, would you hover? How many are the yeses though? See, 36. That's still fantastic for a committee. I thought that was fantastic. So 36 people said, yeah, sign me up. I'm willing to be helpful with that. So we will take that information and go forward with that as well, that will start that conversation. I don't know if there's any board members that would like to be a part of that subcommittee, but we certainly welcome you to be a part of that conversation. We had started once a long time ago and then...
Yeah, we had kind of explored this a little bit with student success committee.
Yep. And we tried linking it to student achievement. And the schools that are doing it now say that there is no effect to increase student achievement. It's all of the other factors. And so Toma is currently running one of their highest poverty schools in this model. And they said, it's not necessarily about increasing their achievement, it's about slowing down the summer loss, is the attitude that they've taken, that the kids that lose more than a grade level during the summer, that they're, they're still pretty new in it, that they're hoping that that will slow that down. So that's what I, the inclement weather, learning opportunities kind of led right into the whole calendar, but I knew we've been talking around that stuff. And so I was pleased, when you send an email out to all families with a survey, 300 responses doesn't usually happen, but I said, in the survey, I said, you'll be able to share your opinion on things important like graduation date, when the school year ends, spring break, like please give us your opinion. So I was there that we got that much participation. I think that is representative.
It's complete, pretty much.
It is. Well, typically when we send something out, if they don't respond while it's in their inbox, they're not going to. And I sent it out last Wednesday and so we, I feel like that's probably as much as we're going to get.
So will they ever see the results?
Absolutely, absolutely. So I will probably, not all those topics lumped together, but we'll certainly talk about the exploring of the new calendar. We'll certainly talk about graduation dates. In fact, I would like that information and ask the board if you are interested in revisiting graduation date for 2020. We had set that date at a previous meeting, but I'm wondering if we want to reconsider that at some point. So that something has to happen tonight, but, we definitely will. And some of it, I'll just put in the Tigger Tribune, just so that people know.
Sean, is there any way to find out how many of our students do not have in that common?
Um, we can certainly ask. I mean, we could ask teachers to do a tally. I don't know how, how young of an age that would be accurate, you know?
I was thinking more of a high school day of laptops and they're kind of depending on kind of...
But not necessarily because they can download their stuff. And that was something that the other school that has done that e-learning, before they leave, the day before, if there's, I mean, it's usually not a secret that there's a storm coming, they can download all the things that they need so that it's housed right on their laptop, that even without the internet connectivity, it wouldn't be as, you know, as big of a barrier.
Yeah. Kind of good to know that.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. All of our surveys are electronic right now, so that doesn't bode well for that question, but we could certainly ask face-to-face.
Is there any other questions or discussion? Okay, thank you. That was good information. You received the monthly expenditures in your packet. Does anyone have anything that they want brought out for discussion? Okay. Hearing none, is there a motion to approve?
You have your motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Apparently no discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carried. Budget update.
Okay. So we are going to share with you, usually by this time of year, we have started our list of possible reduction areas and reprioritization. We're really in a unique spot this year that we're just not sure what that final budget is going to look like. We believe from everything that we've heard, it's going to be favorable for public education, but we can't take any numbers to the spreadsheet yet. And so we're still kind of in a holding pattern. However, even knowing that, we have some pretty exciting, for those of us that have been at the budget table for years, this was really exciting. We kind of said that Melanie, Jimmy, and Chris, it's unfair that their first time at the budget table, they don't have to go through that painful four-month process, but let me just give you the highs and lows real quick, and then Jill certainly can chime in if you'd like. But to look at the columns going down this way, you can see that all of them are, we are recommending a 2% salary increase across the top. And then the health insurance is the box that is in yellow. When we did our conference call with the rest of our co-op, remember this is our first year being a part of that large co-op, in the past, we've had our initial insurance recommend, or increases have been 20%, they've been 15%, they've been painful. Because we joined the co-op this year, we had a cap on it that 12 or 11, 11% was going to be the cap this year. When we did our conference call, the collective experience of the group is coming in very, very, very well. And because it is such a large purchasing group, it is really, they said 6% is their first blush without any negotiating. And so they really feel confident that 6% health insurance increase would be the maximum and did not think that it would get that high. They were pretty confident that they'd be able to talk it down from there. And so if you look at the numbers, and Jill can walk you through the formulas there, but if you look at the numbers here, even with the 6% increase, the red is 44,624. We've looked at $350,000 in red there way, 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 way too often. So that's really exciting. If the health insurance gets down to 3%, we're already in the black by some. And obviously, they said, they talked about if we were willing to sign on for two more years, could they possibly get a 0% health insurance increase, all of that stuff. And just a reminder, our health insurance rate is based off of the experience that we use. We've had a couple tough years where we paid 100% in premium and we have 120% usage as an organization, sometimes a little bit closer to 100, but several years where we've been over. This year, up until this point, our usage, we've paid the premium and we're at 79% usage as our organization. And then the whole co-op is at 80%. And so exciting for us that we are right in the ballpark with the rest of the group, but that we're also seeing some reduced increases. So we could say reduce increases or increase health would be another way to do that. So we were very, very, very excited about that. And this is with the most conservative estimate. This is using the dollar amounts that are currently in law. So if you recall, we were able to add $100 per student because we were a low-spending district, that is current law. This is not taking into account any of the conversations or recommendations from the Blue Ribbon Commission on School Funding or from Governor Seaver. So did you want to add any?
No, you've stole my thunder to blow the great news. No. So Dr. Seaver says, right, this is the first year our revenue limit, we actually have a increase before, we don't start in the negative before we start talking about salary and benefits. And again, this is the most conservative plan, it's current law. So it's the $100 per pupil increase. We're a low-spending district, so we go from $9,400 per pupil to $9,500 per pupil. I made a note here that one of the governor's proposals is a $200 per pupil increase. That would mean another $175,000 available for the school district under the revenue limit. And I, part of his proposal was also even to take the low-spending districts up to $9,700 per pupil, and that would even be more. So I didn't put that one out there, that was a little pie in the sky for me, so I'm like, hmm, well, let's talk about these two for now, so. So, and if we just want to go down quickly down the left side of the column, so that's our revenue limit increase from above comparing last year to this year, 41,791, taking out the 2% for all our salary pools. We're doing our different funding mechanisms for salaries and then fringe benefit increases, so that is like social security, retirement is that small piece. And then health insurance is based upon whatever's up here in the yellow. So under this model, $80,000 would be at a 3%, so an $80,000 increase. One thing that I discovered as the school year started is that when I thought our Sage and AGR aid would be going down, it actually went up. So I thought we had a lower amount of pupils in those grade levels from K3, and that's where we get our Sage aid. We get so much per pupil, but our poverty level is going up so great that we're actually getting more aid than we've ever gotten in Sage. So when I thought it'd go down by a little bit, it's actually going up by about $130,000. So 150 total then, over what I had estimated. So that, that would be new dollars for next year if that trend continues. And then down below, what I did is, you might recall, in the fall, we had some additional dollars under the revenue limit. We had more pupils than we had planned on, so we had some additional funds, and this is how we use them. We put $100,000 into consultants for professional development, a little bit into capital maintenance and a little bit into furniture. So with assuming taking these out of the equation right away, our first outs, that's how we would get to these bottom line totals. So absolutely great news. They really were leaning on a 3% and they said maybe even a zero. I mean, so that would really be awesome. And they also are really putting that leverage of good loss ratio to the next year. We didn't have a negotiated rate for 2021, so that would also help us in that environment as well.
Exciting news about health insurance, which...
We haven't had that in a lot of years.
No.
So this, the per pupil increases and things are from the previous budget?
Yep, it's the current one.
The current one.
The current law. So if nothing else changes, if they didn't undo what had been done, this is exactly where we'd be. But we are hopeful that they won't undo, but will instead add on is what our hope is. Because of course, we always have a list of things that we want to do differently, reprioritization, and then we have to keep carving away at what are we going to stop doing because we have the same pool of dollars. Of course, there's a lot of that stuff that we'd love to have a conversation about being able to add some programs we have cut for so many years. It would be exciting to be able to do some things differently.
So this was the state 18, 19 budget?
Correct. Any other questions? So moving forward, that means since we are not in a spot, part of what pushes our budget conversations forward with the board is any potential staff layoffs or reductions. And so we are not going to be in that spot this year. We are not going to be looking at cutting programs or laying off staff. And so you technically have until June before you approve a budget. I, again, don't know when the state will finalize theirs, but we are very comfortable if we did nothing different. We should know about health insurance by the end of March, so that part will at least become locked in. But absolute worst-case scenario, let's say it is 6%. Every year, we say that we have some flexibility with our fund balance and we've never, we've not had to tip, dip into it. So if we do absolutely nothing different, we would be comfortable recommending the first column with, starting with the $44,000 deficit and using fund balance to cover that. So we feel like we, the administrative team is going to continue prioritizing and having conversations. We're, as we shared with you, those budget principles, we're analyzing the impact of any of those potential adds that we would have, and so we will be ready. Once we know how much money we have, we will be ready with recommendations for you, but it may not be until June. And again, our more aggressive timeline in the past has been because it has to do with staff and there's that strict timeline for staff renewals and such. Questions?
So Shelley, then, the deficit that we would use fund balance or wouldn't be like repeating expenses, they would be more time?
Because if we, once they pass this, the timing of things. So then for the following year, we would know we have to cut, we'd have to make those reductions to make sure that we were balanced for that following year. So certainly wouldn't let our reoccurring keep going on and on and on. It's just the messy timeline of the school finance, so.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
When do we know about health insurance?
So I think by the end of March. They thought that they would be able to tell, right, end of March, early April is what they were hoping. So that will help to lock it in and then that, you know, helps that a great deal. And, and again, we've said to you, I think every year that I've been in this spot, we've said to you, and that little bit of leftover we'll take from fund balance, and we've never had to because a couple more kids come in the fall or, you know, what, our impact date comes in a little bit higher. There's just so much crystal ball that goes into school finance. We always say that and we haven't had to, so our fund balance continues to be very strong and healthy and so we don't feel too concerned about having that as our backup plan. But that was a good question, it's not reoccurring.
Any discussion or questions? Thank you for that. Next, we'll have our CISA contract.
Great. So I show you the last five years, just because it's interesting to keep tabs on that. So this, we've had Shelby Luxer come and present to you at some point and share with you all that CISA has to offer. And I just wanted to keep track for you, how much we spend, because I felt like they haven't increased some of our administrative costs for the last couple of years. You can see that top line was the same from 16 all the way over, and now this year, they've increased that slightly. They really do a great job helping with some of those services, that there's nobody in our district who has the expertise or the time to become an expert on things. And for a little bit of help, CISA can help coordinate that. Like I talked about our youth apprenticeships and our partnership with Sherry Torpleson. She does a great job reaching out to all the CTE. And so some of those kinds of things. So the contracted services that we do pay for, that administrative services is my pack group, all the other superintendents. Then there's the FMES is environmental services through CISA 10. They do our back-to-school in-service, as well as he helps us with walkthroughs and makes sure that we are compliant. School improvement services, that is Stephanie's cohort, all the curriculum directors around the region, Title I leadership, that's a pretty small dollar amount, but that is, Patty Harrelson is our Title I leader, and she is also a part-time LMC director, also a part-time interventionist. And so she appreciates someone else just helping along with all the federal guidelines and timelines. And then the whole slew of the rest of that down to here are all special education services. And those fluctuate greatly, but they fluctuate absolutely contingent on the students in seats. And so we can estimate our audiology needs, but a student may move in in July that has significant needs, and then that number will change drastically. And so we reserve spots, they reserve units is what they call them, and they bill us based off those units. And if the kid moves away, they will refund them to us in the fall and vice versa. So all of those special ed ones are extremely fluent, I guess.
So did we have a vision person move away? Looking at, last year was 29.
I'm going to ask Tammy.
He used to be Tara for a while.
Oh.
And then when she took on the early childhood position, we needed to fill that.
Last year, we, yes, it was part-time, thank you for that. And we've hired her now as a full-time for. Any questions, comments, or concerns? It looks like some of those are really growing, but then you look at the bottom line and it's really not so different, and it's actually down from the most recent years.
Any questions on the CISA contract? Is there a motion to approve?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any questions? All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed. Okay, motion carried. Policy Committee, this is the second reading of our policies. Are there any of the policies that you want brought out for further discussion? We went through them last meeting, and they've been cleaned up a little bit.
I have a lot better. There's no red on it.
Yeah, no lines.
That's right.
Okay. Hearing none, I would just like to put forth a consent agenda approval of all of the second readings.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed. We're down to...
While we're on policy, I just would give a reminder to those that policy meets the first Monday in April, so I think it is April 4th.
It is.
Yeah. And did I say that you were not able to make it? Is that what I heard? And so will we have a quorum? Or do we need to move?
I'm still the old calendar, I don't have my phone, sorry. April 4th, I'm in Philadelphia, NSBA.
So I believe we're going to have to reset both of your time. Okay? Should I do a doodle for maybe the following week or what's your pleasure?
I'm pretty sure I can do the following week.
So April 8th? Does that work for you, Angel? April 8th? Glad we asked then. I will let the other, Marty, we help, let the rest of the committee know.
There were meeting minutes in your packet? Anything brought out for changes? Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Thank you. Second. Okay, Patty, second. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carried. Dr. Seaver's report.
I just have two things that I wanted to share with you. Do you guys all get a copy of this?
Yeah.
Did you see how many times Black River Falls was in this? You open up the front cover and there's Patty and Mary Jo. And then you go through it and there's, well, Mary Jo's in there a lot this time, but Patty and the other Mary Jo got in there. Marcus Lewis had a double-page spread in here and he had not seen it. So I had actually taken a picture of it and sent it to him, and he was pretty excited. And so he had just met with me the previous week, saying that he's interested in starting an educational consulting business. And so I took a picture, I go, looks like you're on your way, some nice free advertising here. And then Mary Jo in both spots in the back. So how nice to be represented in there so often. And so I don't know if some of you wanted a copy of it, I have extras if you'd like. But truthfully, all, all teasing aside, there's not many districts that bring that much representation down there. And so I really do commend you guys for taking that interest. And we always come back with some tidbits of, boy, that was really great, and we learned this there, and I wonder how they do that, and really some great takeaways. And so I appreciate you guys giving up your time. And it's just kind of fun that the Wisconsin School News noticed that so many from Black River Falls were there. So good for you guys. And the other thing I wanted to highlight, could you hold up your candidate forum page? I put one by each of the board member's spots. So the PTO is sponsoring a board member candidate forum, thank you. And it is Wednesday, the 27th, at Ridge Creek Elementary. It's going to be right in the cafeteria, and so there will be some snacks available there. And the PTO, they're nervous about having to speak in public, and I said, well, the candidates will be doing most of the speaking, so don't worry. But Marty did call and all four have confirmed that they are going to be participating. So I would encourage everyone to come out and hear what they have to say. So that is all that I had. We can go to the buildings. Should we start with Tammy this time?
I will go first this time. All right. Last month, when we had our snow day, February 7th, we were scheduled to have our child development day. Last year, after our child development days, we decided to get together and we wanted to make it bigger and better and see if we could draw in more kids, because we were concerned that we were missing students. And we really wanted to see if we could find a way to get more kids in. And so this year, we did a better job of advertising, we worked with some community partners and we got it out there. We had over 90 families that came in March 7th. So again, it got canceled February 7th, rescheduled for March 7th. And again, we had over 90 families that yielded 13 referrals to look at for further evaluations. So that was huge. Last year, we had like 42 that yielded like five evaluations. And so right now, we're at over 90 that we're looking at 13, we just did 13 referrals, looking at further, but a huge success. The staff involved did an amazing job. We were screening nine people an hour. And the staff over at Forest Street was amazing, because we moved, we moved gym class out of the gym, so we used the whole gym. We had everybody eating in their classroom that, that day, everybody had bad lunches and so kind of took over the whole building. And our speech therapists and our psychologists and our 4K teachers and our early childhood teachers, everybody played a huge part. The secretaries who scheduled, it was a huge undertaking, we had community partners, it was huge. And Melanie did a great job of really getting that bully in gear for everything that had to happen that day. So it was an amazing turn up and we hope to do even more next year. But when you think about it, not over 90 people, families showing up that day, and with the exception of two people that had to reschedule, that was the only change we made from February to March. So that was absolutely amazing. And so, and that's twofold, to try to get students in earlier so that we can figure out who needs services and who doesn't, but also to get a better handle on our, our 4K numbers coming in. So it really served a great purpose.
And honestly, that number of 90, at this point, we usually have about 40, 45 kids and we have no idea. And then August comes and suddenly we have 90 and we're like, we don't have classrooms, we don't have teachers, we don't. So it really helps us a great deal to have all these people aware and on board. And it was funny, because one of the parents of a four-year-old, who, that's their oldest child, they said, hey, I know that we just went to that screening and you just sent out a calendar survey? Any chance I'm almost a part of the district? Could I fill that out? I'm like, sure. So it's just interesting that they're at that end of the spectrum, they're anxious to get on board and start getting my messages all the time, I'm sure, but that's really great.
And we'll look again next year. Our goal is really to do it in February, so hopefully no more snow days. Because with the amount of referrals, we need that time to get those referrals done and processed. But to be able to look at 12 or 13 students ahead of time is huge for us, so.
Just the summer planning and the staffing that goes into it, when that many kids show up in August with that kind of high needs, that really puts us behind the eight ball, so it's great.
It's a big jumpstart to the start.
Tammy, you mentioned your community partners. Did you have birth to three screenings at the same time?
Birth to three was here, Anita was here. And so when we scheduled, when we sent out the, and we sent postcards to everybody, but when we did the scheduling, her name was on the things, brochures as well, so that they could schedule and call her directly and schedule, but she was there the time, for the entire time.
And Head Start was there for enrollment as well? Very cool. Very nice.
So I'm going to tell you a little bit about testing. As you know, the juniors take the ACT test every year. This year was scheduled to be in February. That didn't happen. And so actually, it did happen last Tuesday on the 12th, juniors took the ACT test. We did things a little bit differently than we have in the past. We had all the juniors there like we had always done, but we organized some really good opportunities for the freshmen and sophomores. The sophomores went up to Eau Claire, they got a tour of CBTC and got real good feedback from them. They went around to all their different departments and learned about different career opportunities and education they can get through a technical college there. The freshmen went down to Lacrosse, got a tour of Western Technical College and Maturo, and got great information there in the afternoon. Then they spent, both freshmen and sophomores, with their advisors, going through their academic and career planning, looking, talking about what they had seen and updating things things in their career plan as far as what they are looking at doing. Helped them with their course selection, which has been happening the last two weeks. They just turned in their final selections today. Meanwhile, the seniors were working on either documenting or putting in some community service time or encouraging them to put in, to give back a little bit to the community. And the juniors were all scheduled to take the work keys the very next day. And of course, we didn't have school that day either. So that test is now being rescheduled, so they'll do that on April 4th.
Thank you. Thank you for your flexibility.
Some highlights from the middle school include, we had a visitor last week, actually, not really an instructional coach, but a representative from Carnegie Learning. And that's our new math program in middle school this year. And Vicki Wood is her name. And she came to the middle school last Thursday. It was kind of cool. We did some, you sat in some classrooms, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade classrooms. And then that same day, she planned with a team of sixth grade math teachers and a team of eighth grade math teachers. Then the next day, Vicki is her name, she presented a lesson while other math teachers came in and watched her present a sixth grade lesson and an eighth grade lesson. And then we had, she joined us for the Math PLC at the end of the day on Friday. And it was a really, really good meeting. And the staff came up with some good ideas and Vicki had some great things to share out on, you know, the new way that we learn math. It's not just sit in a row and do problems 1 through 35, but it's work in a group, talk together about the problem, come back to the front of the classroom and discuss it and move on. It's really pretty interesting. So we're in our first year of it and we have more visits yet in June with Vicki from Carnegie and hope to make gains in that area, too. Pretty exciting. You may have heard a couple of weeks ago, Terrence Callie from a group called Youth Alive came to Black River Falls and gave presentation to the middle school and the high school. And then they had a presentation in the evening. And they presented their nonreligious, their secular presentation at middle school and the high school. It was just fabulous. I mean, it's been years since I've seen so many middle school kids really, really into a motivational speaker. And he had a great mix of multimedia. And he got some teachers up there and got the kids laughing. But then he brought them down and his main message was, "Don't give up. Don't give up." He shared a couple of stories that were pretty emotional. And we had a number of kids in tears and seeking some consolation. I mean, nothing bad, but just, you know, some things I think stuck home with kids. But he was very powerful. Matter of fact, it was so good that a lot of the kids were saying, "Gosh, Mr. Earl, we'd rather have a motivational speaker than a fun night." I said, "Well..."
Wow.
"I know. We might be able to work something like that out." And I want to thank Kristy Roush for coordinating our spelling bee again. Winners this year were 7th grader Kylie Ramirez. She got first place. And 8th grader Jacob Ward. And they will move on to the next level for the spelling bee. Last week was National Spread the Word to End the Word. And I think you might recall in January, I believe, when Tammy shared the diversity day at the middle school at the 8th grade. That was done in collaboration with the special education teachers, Tammy, and the special teachers. Well, I think that last week was National Spread the Word to End the Word Day. And we didn't get our T-shirts ordered in time, but Amy Rackham went down to M&amp;M Sports and had these awesome T-shirts made up. They got in, gave me the other day, so here's what we're wearing tomorrow. We'll have to have a free jeans day. You notice that she cleverly got BRF in there, if you believe that. Just be respectful, choose kind. And it just reminds students and staff that people from all walks of life come through our doors and we need to treat everybody with dignity and respect. And of course, last but not least, we have Wisconsin Forward on the horizon, just a couple of weeks away. And our school counselor, Ashley Calio, preaching Ashley Wyble, who has... Ashley Wyble has worked very, very hard to put in a great schedule in place for us. And I'm looking forward to that kicking off in just a couple of weeks.
Thank you.
Our focus is going to be quickly, super quick, on our coaching, but I wanted to announce to all of you, I'm not sure if you had heard, but Kristy Roush is a 5th grade teacher. Did you hear this?
Electronically, not...
Oh, okay.
No, go ahead.
She won her COELE Award. And so at the end of March, March 31st, on a Sunday, we're going to be heading up to a luncheon to honor her. And so that's super exciting. She's worked so hard. The process started last February. And so she had to do a lot of work once she was nominated to basically apply herself then and submit essays and letters of recommendation. And so she put in a lot of work. So we were super excited to...
And there's a $6,000 grant for the school and a $6,000 grant for her. So it's pretty exceptional for her. Yes.
We are super excited. So our coaching at Red Creek, while some of the schools are doing instructional coaching, our teachers had asked for more behavioral. So... Sorry. And I didn't plan on doing a presentation, but...
You did go to sleep and had to flick it on and off on the side?
Oh, there we go. But we had, this is how we rolled it out to the staff. So our why is we have all these good things going on, but we're still not like demolishing our ODRs and they're not going away. So, and the teacher feedback on their PD wishes was for more classroom management and how do we address these big behaviors? So we have Chris Peterson joining our building. And so he is a parenting professor, I think is his little tag. You may have seen him. He's been on the news just recently. He's been around the Lacrosse area with their school district and currently holding a few different parenting sessions down there. So he's got good things to say about Love and Logic. So this is our little journey this year. He introduced himself and the teaching with Love and Logic to our staff. So we had everybody there, the teachers and the sports staff. And then now he's coming in these three-day chunks. And so he'll be with us starting tomorrow. But the first time, so what he does is, the first two days, he visits classrooms. So on February 18th, he visited 2nd grade. On the 19th, he was in lots of 3rd grade classrooms just observing. And then on the 20th, he met during their encore, their team planning times, and just shared some advice, some thoughts on our kids, some strategies that maybe would work well. And so now this time, he's going to hit 4th and 5th grade. And we're also working in some of our, you know, music art fayed. Our counselors are meeting with him. And then this Wednesday, we're half, he's holding a presentation for our families. And we currently have like 55 adults coming with a bunch of kids. And so we have free childcare. The PTO is providing a Pizza Hut supper, so that's super awesome. And then depending on that turnout, then he will also offer the six-week Love and Logic parenting classes here in Black River Falls, which will be amazing. So then, and I told Angie Dutton, it wasn't just for her, but at the end, May 8th, if you're friends with her on Facebook, she loves her Mondays. And so he's got a presentation called Learning Decreed Mondays that he'll do for our staff. So we don't have to go through anymore. Any questions on that? If you know of any families, send them our way Wednesday night.
At noon today, it was 35, so you kept gathering more families?
Well, that was responses, but then there's a couple of adults.
Oh, mobile people. Okay, fantastic. Fantastic.
So I want to share about two things, actually. At Forest Street, this past month, we had our first three groups of kiddos that won, that rose in the Principal's 200 Club filled up. So we had three groups of kids that won extra rewards. We had a group that got to have lunch with me and I brought dessert. I had a group that got to go outside and go sledding. And I had a group that got an ice cream party. So teachers really loved it. The kids absolutely loved it. The day we got to go outside and go sledding, it was a beautiful, sunshiny day. And so that was really well received and it was great to go outside and celebrate with them. So we are starting all over. Our Board is empty and we're starting back fresh now. So the next thing I want to share that Shelley asked me to talk about is our new style of here and future conferences that we're going to be using next year. I had used this previously in my other district and really excited to bring it here. We started using it over there because we had a lot of parents that had pretty negative experiences when they were going to school. And we wanted to show them that school can actually be a really positive place to be. And so it was a great way to engage parents and to show them the great things that we're doing in the school and how they can really engage in their child's learning at home. And so I don't... Jill, did you get the, this that I shared with you? If not, it's okay. I can talk you through it.
So what we'll do is, there'll be three sets of conferences next year. The one at the beginning and the one at the end of the year will be a whole group. And so parents will come into the room and we share data all upon the board. Students have randomly assigned numbers. And so you won't go in there and know who is kid is who. When parents come in, in their folder, they'll have a number in there that will tell them which child is theirs. So this is a presentation that we used. I've kind of tweaked it, but it's definitely a work in progress. It's one that we use. It's a bones from our old one. So if you go to the next, this is kind of walking the parents through what we're going to do. And you can keep going. So when the parents come in, in a previous board meeting, I talked about how I start my staff meetings with a Brain Smart Start. And so we have an activity to connect with our parents. And so they get to know what a Brain Smart Start looks like. And so we're going to walk them through one of those. You can go through to the next one. We talk about what our goals are. This is from my prior school. So we'll tweak it for, for Forest Street. Next one. So this is an example of what the data will look like. We use DRA there, but we'll use whatever classroom data we're going to be targeting for the year. So all of the students are projected along the bottom and we can show parents that this is where their beginning of the year performance is. And the red line is where we'd like them to be at the end of the school year. And then the next step is, you can go to the next slide. So we share our school goal. And then the next slide, we did it for literacy and we did it for math. And we actually tied in SEL, too. And then we teach parents some ways to engage kids that they might not be aware of. It's great to know about games that you can do with your kids, so it doesn't feel like work at home. And, you know, a lot of parents think that school has to be boring activities. It can't be engaging. But I really like to share engaging activities that they can do with their kids at home. So we'll teach them how to engage. And then this all happens within an hour. So the first of the year and the end of the year conferences are this format. And the middle one is for them to have one-on-one time with their teacher. Do you have some questions about that?
Did we hear this, something about this before? Or what?
WSB conference had that whole idea of engaging families.
Oh, that's where we heard it, huh?
Yes.
From the magazine? You liked the back to eat, too.
I liked the back to eat.
You know, the divided program? We have a person who knows all about it.
Oh, that's one that we all, that you were in, too.
Oh, yeah. Patty has.
She asked me to put on the agenda and I talked to Melanie and she said, "I'll share about it for my school thing." So...
Okay, thank you.
One thing that I forgot to share, just quickly, the servant leadership breakfast that I talked to you a little bit about last time was rescheduled and we actually had that here this morning. We had a fantastic turnout. My goodness, we had invited, oh, I think we probably sent out like 60 letters. And we had RSVPs for 45 people and we had over 50 that came. And so Connie had a great breakfast for them and some good conversation. And a lot of people that got some wheels turning and they're, have already expressed an interest in coming back and inviting more to the table. So it was good. Tom Thibodeau came from Maturo and he's just so easy to listen to. He comes with so much expertise and so many life stories and he really just did a great job. So we appreciated that and we're looking forward to moving that forward.
It was a really good community engagement at its best. Thank you for hosting that. I think I was proud. Okay. We'll move on to WSB or other business. We have a special meeting on Wednesday and I want to remind everyone to do their evaluation of our district administrator ahead of time, please, so we can move fast on doing that. Not move fast, but move forward on doing her evaluation in an effective manner. And then the forum next Wednesday to participate in that would be a good thing for board members. I did go down to Madison for the Capitol visits and we had presentations from the legislators on the budget. And they do say they will have the budget done by June 30th. And so they all said that. So they've got a commitment to do that. I know. I was just, okay, let's see. So we'll wait to see that. Any other...
Any questions? Just for next one?
Hi, Mr. Thibodeau?
Yep, Thibodeau.
You mentioned this, this morning, too, about teaching civics. And I think we had talked about getting maybe one of the focus on purposes before the end of the year could be what's happening in our social studies and civics or at least sometime in the future.
Do you have the schedule handy that you know when the secondary social studies is? Or is that next year? Could you look it up first while we're talking?
I think it's next year.
Okay. All right. Then we'll figure something out for this year.
Okay. Okay, thank you. So any other business? Is there a motion to adjourn?
I don't know.
Okay.
I'll second.
Second? Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Record time, guys. Thank you. See you on Wednesdays then, or Wednesday. So are you thinking, like, in a car traveling?
I'm thinking the bus.
Oh, bus?
Simply...
Oh, of course.
Yeah, if they're acting, that would definitely be not okay because it talks a school function. If you're on the bus, you're in some school sanctioned activity or you wouldn't be on a bus.
On school premises, yeah.
And smoking in a car in the school parking lot is not allowed.
School premises would be under the definition of school premises. Our transportation system.
Definitely.
Still want to leave a loophole.
Yes. Yes.
And even talks at the very end, it just says, "Members of the public who violate the tobacco or nicotine product use prohibitions outlined in this policy will be asked to discontinue, so choose to leave premises long for us when officials may be contacted as necessary and appropriate." Sometimes it's just been awkward when you have to go tell somebody, "You can't smoke here." Well, I'm not on school grounds, but you're here for a school function. And then it gets combative and now we can simply say, "Tobacco-free schools." Done. So any questions about that one?
So that will be included with anything asking for chef rooms for parents?
That's a great point to update our volunteer handbook. Might be, please take a note of that. Thank you.
So the last one that I have for you, we kind of dug into the AODA and tobacco, all of that stuff. So this policy is one of the recommendations from the WSB Policy Resource Guide. What I appreciated about it is that it talks about the student alcohol and other drug abuse. And it was just far more succinct than the previous one that got a little bit wordy. And so the bullets or the numbered are more clear that no student may possess or use, distribute, sell, or purchase drug paraphernalia. It spelled out that clearly, whereas before, there was a paragraph that talked about the intent to sell or you may not possess it. And so it just, it felt like there was a lot of people trying to make loophole discussions when clearly it just shouldn't be on school grounds. This one feels much more black and white. It should not be on school grounds. The big editor's note there, I left this in there because I, that's a little further. I wanted to talk to the policy committee about it and they all agreed with the same as the administrators. This policy sample provided you with a choice whether you wanted to be able to require a breathalyzer of a student. And what currently happens if we believe a student is under the influence, we can ask them to take a breathalyzer. And if they say no, we can suspend them from school for a failure to follow a direct, you know, insubordination, basically. So we could still send that student home. This, if the board agrees with the recommendation, that we would be able to allow that. And if a student refuses to take the breathalyzer from a police officer or not from us, if they refuse it, then we will assume that they are under the influence and then would
And then would move forward with either the deferred expulsion or the AODA counseling or whatever that step may be. But if they're just going to flat out and say, "No, I'm not going to take it," then we're going to say, "Well, then we're assuming that you are under the influence." As opposed to a one-day suspension for failure to follow a direct request of an administrator. Is everyone else okay with that? The admin team was supportive and the policy committee was supportive of adding that link. The challenge, of course, comes in when somebody appears to be under the influence of something and a breathalyzer won't find it. But the police have certainly been helpful in partnering with us, trying to figure that out as well. Not that it happens often, but questions or comments about that?
We will vote on these.
Actually, one more.
Oh, that's right. Student due process, yeah.
The student due process rights, that is a very old policy. It was written in 1990. And the students' rights have been embedded into so many other policies, whether we're talking about discipline or courses of selection or any of those things, that there is no need to have a separate policy on student due process.
Okay, any questions on this for tonight? Hey, Rue. Amy, did you start to say something?
Oh, no.
Oh, okay. So we will be voting on this for the March meeting. Okay, we'll move on to meeting minutes. The January meeting minutes were in your packet. Does anyone have any changes or discussion on those? Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed. Okay, motion carried. Dr. Siverson's administrative report is next.
I think if you didn't see the PR, our local civics team that was put together. This is the first year that the Wisconsin Association.
Newspapers Association.
Thank you. Sponsored the civics competition. And so good for Mr. McKinnon and Mr. Shepherd for putting together a team. And our kids went up to UW Eau Claire and took first place. And so February 23rd, they go down to Madison to compete. There was four regions throughout the state. And so our kids are first place taking, and the first and second both go down to represent. So that was pretty exciting for those kids to go and for the first time and be successful.
Where is that at Madison? How?
I'm unsure.
Okay, because I'm there that day for WASB.
Would you like me to do some scouting?
Yeah, please. If it's nearby, I'll stop in. Okay, thank you.
You have heard from, I think there's some students that came in their RCLA project where they've talked a little bit about the green team at the high school. Just a little update on their recycling project. Last year it was the milk cartons that they were working on. This year at the high school, they have a separate bin for students to put their fruit and vegetable extras in that they are not meant to consume from their tray. And the team or the FFA has actually bought a pig. And thank God they're not hosing it in that activity area. They are hosing it out at a local pig farm. And they take all of that leftover garden bar stuff and they feed it to the pig. And so when I was talking to Ms. Knodel and Mr. Markhardt about it, they shared that there are some students who are highly offended that we are fattening up a pig so that we could slaughter it. And so they said to not participate, which is absolutely fine. And she said, "And on the reverse, there are some students who will load up on fresh fruits and veggies so that they can overfeed the pig." And so to me, it feels like student demonstration in democracy at its finest. Both of them getting televi for what they believe is right. I got a little chuckle out of the pig. So in the end, it's getting fed because it's growing. So that's great. I wanted to share briefly, Madison McCormick is a senior this year and she was intending on going to school for nursing. And she was invited to be a part of, she wasn't invited initially. She applied and has been invited. And I don't know all the details. I just know that I've been chatting with her briefly and was going to cover it in one of my Spotlight on Schools. There was over 400 students that applied and it is either at Rochester or at St. Mary's University, both in Minnesota, that has some kind of a program with Mayo Health. That if she is accepted, they guarantee her a spot in the nursing program. So it's not all that competitiveness in the beginning. They guarantee her a spot. And I believe there's some scholarship money included in that as well. 400 people applied, 40 got face-to-face interviewed. She was one of them selected for the interview and she went on the polar vortex day for her interview and was successful. And so she now knows that she'll be going to St. Mary's University in Winona as a part of this Mayo connection. And so I was awful proud of her. And that's an awful big pool of candidates to keep whittling down, whittling down that she was one of them accepted. So she'll be doing one of my Spotlight on Schools shortly because that's pretty exciting. A reminder about that business luncheon on March 1st. That was something that the board had said that they wanted to be aware of when that was happening. So remember that is the second annual one. And then there's those smaller breakout groups that happen in between. But March 1st is when the second annual large group one will be happening, not just that steering committee. And so if you're planning on coming, we would really appreciate an RSVP because it's tight in here. And so we are certainly, certainly welcome to join us, but please let us know so that we're not surprised. And that same comment for this Wednesday, if you're planning on coming to the servant-led community breakfast that's here at 7:30, please let myself or Marty know if you're planning on joining us because we have about 40 community people who have RSVP to that. So that's pretty exciting. That's it for me. Elementary's already gone. Dave Rue, you're it.
Good evening, everyone. Carol Harmon, RCLA advisor at the middle school, shared out that 17 students competed at the STAR events at WWTC on February 1st. And all except one student are all going on to state competition at the conference in April. So congratulations to those students. Brian Snapper is the tech ed teacher at the middle school. And he also runs a couple of different clubs, not the least of which is robotics club. And he had two robotics teams compete at Whitehall on Saturday, February 9th. And Brian himself takes the kids. That does Carol when she takes them. And Brian took the students and two students, TJ, let's see, TJ Gabhart and Hunter Nimmel, qualified to go to state competition in robotics at MSOE College in Madison on March 3rd. Congratulations to those students. And the final thing, kind of a timely share out. Tonight, we had a really good meeting after school with members of the, let me see, what's on my notes here? Yeah, we had several members from the Ho-Chunk Nation Youth Services, the Ho-Chunk Education Department, and the Ho-Chunk Social Services. And we met to discuss some student concerns that we had. And wanted to see about bringing in some of the wraparound services. And what could we do to help provide some additional services for our Ho-Chunk youth in the middle school. And I mean, we had that fantastic meeting. Bart Laktin McKenzie was there, Fabie Gay and John Dick. And Daisy Pedavone from the Youth Services. And we came up with a working plan to get some, identify some students. Of course, have, you know, release of information and parent support and all that. Where they're looking at some of the life skills coordinators from Ho-Chunk Social Services could come in during tiger time, which is roughly 1:01 to 1:45, Monday through Thursday at the middle school. And to pull some of those kids out who could benefit from some of those life skill coordinator services. And I also invited them to our professional development time on this Friday, where our three committees will be meeting. And again, the three committees are student academic assistance, student behavior, and parent involvement and communication. So I invite members of that team tonight to come in and sit in on some of those committees with us on Friday. So that would be well received and a really good meeting tonight after school. Any questions for me or?
Thank you, Dave.
All right, the high school, we also are partnering with the Ho-Chunk Nation with talking circles. That's been going on at the middle school for a little while. And we have them coming over now, working with students at the high school during our luncheon learn. And that got to go on second semester. Also, a few other things that we have going on. As you recall, last year we had changed from a ranking system for our graduates, starting with this freshman class, class of 2022, to cum laude. And we're going to be calculating that. It probably won't be a whole lot freshman year because there aren't a lot of things that they really can earn those points for. But we take a look at that after this first semester and then at the end of the year. And we're reminding parents about that. On March 6th, we have Parents Tally coming in. He is a speaker who's going to talk to the students about hope. He says, "My hope is that students will know that you matter and because you matter, you make a difference." The battle that students face every day, they have to know that there's hope. And that's a good message for them to hear. What else? We have scheduling coming up. We're pushing that back a little bit later this year. We generally have started that in January, but wanted to kind of focus on the wrapping up semester one. And we moved that back a little bit. So next few weeks, we're going to start planning on scheduling for next year. Our parent-teacher conference this year, and this is going out a little bit, is actually in March. But we're doing it a little bit differently this time around. A big and costly school social worker is creating a family night and bringing in all kinds of community partners and food and games and all kinds of things on March 12th to bring in more families and have them see some of the things. All of the departments are also presenting the things that they've been doing. The engineering lab is going to be hopping that night. And so all the different departments have some things to present about what the kids have been learning there. Also, the high school, middle school career fair has come up on April 9th. And a little bit more immediately, this week, Wednesday, all the juniors in the state will be taking the ACT test as well as our juniors here. We're hoping at 8 o'clock and 10 o'clock. Mother Nature helps us out. The rest of the students are going to be also participating in some events. The freshman class is going to be heading over to Western Technical College in La Crosse to get a tour there and see what opportunities they have for different career training and college opportunities. And the sophomores will be heading up to CVTC, Chippewa Valley Tech in Eau Claire. And the seniors have been challenged to put in four hours to give back to our community that has given so much to them in the past 17, 18 years. And so they're going to be, some of them on that day, some of them throughout the rest of the school year, giving back to our community with some community service. That's where we end.
And this is the first year that the high school has modified the ACT day that all students are now in attendance. And so AKA minutes of instruction. That helps a great deal now that we're inviting all of them to come to that day. Joe, would you like to share a little update on your work with the school safety committee?
Oh, sure. So on February 25th, we are doing a large-scale tabletop exercise here. We're going to be working with the emergency management with Christina Page from Jackson Tony. And she is going to help facilitate between the county, several deputies from the county, the city, several officers in chief, fire, EMS, hospital, and health and human services. And then all of our emergency response teams from each of our buildings. So we're going to be all working together collaboratively in this space, which now I'm thinking about it, we're barely fit in here. But it's kind of the first of its kind to do this big tabletop exercise and work through scenarios and be able to discuss them as we elevate the different scenarios and things like that. So it's kind of going to be really neat to have all those players in the same room. So I'm excited for it.
It's great practice for us, but it's fantastic that they're all willing to come and be able to respond like, you know, as opposed to us saying, "Oh, it's like, I wonder what would happen if," you know, then we have to wait to get back to everyone. It's really nice that they're all coming to be here and be part of the conversation. So just nice to have coordinating that.
Tammy, I would invite you to talk.
A big thing for the next program, we have been kind of cruising along this year. The group has bonded really well. We've done a lot more academics and been able to do a lot more things. But over the course of the last two or three weeks, we've been able to copy places people in different alternative settings throughout the state. So we have brought back three more students in the last two weeks from alternate placements. So I would tell you, we are learning to work together again and with different personalities and different things going on. So we are just kind of feeling our way again with three new personalities added to the group at this point. So that's your app.
Thank you. Any questions for anybody? Okay, we'll move on to Wisconsin Association of School Boards. Just invite anyone to share anything about the convention. I was hoping that we would get together and at a board development sometime and more do more of that, but I don't know. Does anyone have any highlights that they want to talk about? If you can't remember back then, I don't know. Okay. I have one thing to, right after the convention ended and Friday, as you know, I headed off to Washington DC representing Wisconsin at the advocacy work there that we had. And I'll just pass this, pass these around. This is on both sides. This was the focus of the NSBA to focus on fully funding the Individual with Disabilities Education Act. And as you can see on the back, the facts they want to reauthorize. We were able to meet with every single one of our Wisconsin representatives, our senators and our congresspeople in their office. There was one senator that couldn't be available, but his education aid was. And was received very well. We arrived right when the federal government started back in action again. So it was, everyone was very, very busy. And they hoped that we could come back in three weeks if things didn't work out this week. So that was good. But on the backside, I mean, this act, I think, is very, very important that NSBA is focusing on this because we're down to funding at 14%. As you know, the special education, you know, costs a lot of money on our own budgets. And it was started out, they were going to fund, the federal government made it a mandate and we're going to fund it at 40%, but it's never ever gotten beyond, I think, 21%? Is that correct? 21% or something. But this is one of the main focuses, that everyone talked to every one of their representatives. And then in Wisconsin, we also focused on, talked about updating the FERPA, the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act. And that was in particular need of several Wisconsin schools when they have a student who had, for instance, a violent behavior or something like that and was expelled. And then they went on to another district. The information didn't necessarily travel with that student in a timely manner to, for schools to make a appropriate decision. And then what affects Wisconsin a lot was the impact aid to school districts. And we had a position paper because we have so many schools that get impacted. Black River Falls gets right now $349,217 of impact aid. And that's to offset federal land that isn't taxable. And that's always on the chopping block by everybody is to discontinue impact aid. So we talked about that. Any questions? But I have lots of information on that whole conference there if anyone is interested. But I meant to get a report ready for the packet, but I did not. I'll still do that though. Okay, thank you.
So before we disperse, you hopefully found some beautiful note cards by all of your spots and some things highlighting that it is Youth Art Month. Miss Dahl does a fantastic job taking the kids' drawings and putting them into all kinds of functional uses. So aren't those just adorable? But then she also did include, if you look at the papers, it's kind of a decree. She appreciates getting to share these with the kids that look at what the school board believes strongly in the work that you do and so on and so forth. So if you would take a moment to fill this out at your spot and leave it here for us, I would definitely pass those on to her. I was found at the public library this morning in the room right up to the left when you go in. There's a beautiful Youth Art Month display, but it's from our whole region, not just our students. But if you walk through, there's some really, 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 really great projects from our whole Midwestern region, which Miss Dahl also coordinates all of those efforts. So if you think of it, drop her an email or a note or something thanking her for all of her extra efforts. I don't know if I shared with you guys down in Milwaukee, that art competition that takes place down in Milwaukee. She's actually the coordinator and the judge of that competition down in Milwaukee as well. And so she just does so much outreach, outreach, pardon me, art reach, huh? How funny. Outreach for advocating the importance of art in education. And she just really is such a fantastic advocate, I guess, for all kids. And so anytime we can show our appreciation with her, it is well timed most, but.
I've been to this library display twice now, but it really takes some time to go through it because it's very, very good. I was just totally impressed. I took pictures and it was very nice. Thank you. Okay, future agenda items. Anybody have anything?
One thing I was going to highlight, and they might cringe when I say this, but the elementary folks are plucking away at their schedule revisions for next year. And if I say that we'll talk about it next month, that will put a hard deadline on it that we have to have something figured out for next month. Really, it's like two steps forward, one step back in the process. But we will have some updated elementary schedule information for you for next month.
Anything else?
I probably should have thought about this when we were talking about the school board convention. But there was that one, I don't know, that one workshop on engaging families. Maybe that's more for board development, but I think that's something we should.
And so how about if I ask the elementary folks who already have some pretty neat plans along those lines for their parent-teacher conferences for next year, I'll ask them to share that as their share out. And then that will remind you of all the good things you heard there, I guess. And so then we can talk about it more after that, if that works.
Anything else? Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed. We are adjourned.